It's eight thirty on November twenty first, two thousand and three. This is the regularly scheduled Town of New Canaan Board of Selectmen meeting. This is a hybrid meeting and it's our first meeting as a new Board of Selectmen, so. Thanks, everybody. We have the minutes from the prior meeting were reviewed by the prior Board of Selectmen. So I guess we just need to vote to approve them, but they have been reviewed and approved by the full prior Board of Selectmen. So do I have a motion to approve the prior minutes?
So moved.
Hey, motion passes. Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to approve comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to B O S distribution at newcananct.com. Do we have anyone?
Uh, dot com.
Back up, sorry. Thank you. Now, now, anyone in the room? Seeing none. We will move on to snowplow purchase with John Howe. Hi, John. Good morning.
Morning.
Lucky you, you get to be our first presenter.
Yes, I'm not, not exactly sure what you want.
Short straw. Who took the short straw?
I'd like to blame it on Tucker, but it's all right. So we are looking to purchase a new sidewalk plow. This is the plow you'd see regularly going down the sidewalks after a snowstorm. It'll, it's fifty inch wide plow built just for sidewalks. It's, it's kind of painful to buy a snowplow that is only used for snow. It's one of our only pieces of equipment that has a single source for snow, especially with the winters we've been having. But with that said, if we get a couple of feet of snow, it's about the only way we can clear the sidewalks of the snow. So it's a track machine, which is very important because it can climb on and off curbs to get around telephone poles and things like that when it's too narrow. We, with all the sidewalk, we sidewalks we have in town, we need something that can move right along. This has a top speed of nineteen miles an hour. We can't plow at nineteen miles an hour by any means, but it, it has the ability to get through the heavy, deep snow. So we're looking to purchase a brand new S W fifty Bombardier Cryonoth Snow, Snowplow. The, the regular price is one seventy-nine, eight ninety. We're looking to trade in two machines, one that's thirty plus years old, that they were willing to give us fifteen hundred, and one that's about twenty years old, that they'll give us three thousand, so total of trade in value of forty-five hundred, leaving us a final price of one seventy-five, three ninety. This is a budgeted item. In the budget, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the snowplow in the, in the current budget. So in the good part for us with the way equipment's been going with sourcing and everything, this would be available the end of December.
Oh, so great.
So you just pray for enough snow between now and then?
Oh, we, we still have, the other ones are working, but unfortunately, we, we've had three, and we don't feel we need three. If we have two working machines, we're okay.
So we'll have two. We're getting, we're retiring to trading into, but we'll have two with this.
We'll have two. So we'll have the, the new one and then a backup one. So we'll still be able to, because there's times where we'll go out with both of those machines. We have other machines to use for snow and sidewalks, but the, when it, when it's real deep, this is what we need.
John, can you give us a reminder though for residents about who's responsible and where they're responsible? First, it's coming into that season, so we might as well have the conversation.
Yep. Um, the town's responsible for the non-business district areas snow. So it, so in the business district such as Elm Street that way, the property of Butters are responsible for removing the snow and ice.
So this is really sidewalks, residential sidewalks that work?
Residential sidewalks.
Yeah.
And we, we prioritize our, our routes for the school system first. So South Avenue has a lot of walkers, Farm Road, even if there's snow. So that's where we do our prioritization. But then like there's a new one going up Richmond Hill. There's, there's, there's going to be people walking that, so we need the equipment to take care of it.
And so with the extended sidewalks that we've been doing, you're, you're okay with two? I mean, we've been adding more sidewalks in the last couple of years. It made me think two is enough with staffing and getting them done?
Yes, I think two is, is enough. We never ran all three at the same time.
Okay.
Part of the reason we went to three is at the time they were offering us zero trade in for one of them. So now we feel that repair costs are going up, you know?
It's close to zero, but it's.
It's close to zero, but it's better than trying to sell them, you know?
And just so, because we're all new, because of the, the pricing on this, did you go out with a sealed bid?
We did not go out with a sealed bid. Part of the problem is this is a very specialized piece of equipment.
Okay.
So Chadwick Bay Ross is the sole source vendor for Bombardier Cryonoth in New England.
Okay, are there other, like, I don't know enough about snowplows. You know, are there other manufacturers like, you know, with cars, you have multiple?
In this case, no, something that's heavy duty like this. This is a really heavy duty machine. We have two Toro snow blower conversions. They're a mower in the summertime and then we convert them, but they're not heavy duty equipment, so they can go through six inches of snow without a problem. But with the pushback from snowplows and things like that, we can't. So this is the only track machine.
It's like a mini tank.
It's like a mini, it is actually like a mini tank. So, so unfortunately, there's, there isn't another piece of equipment that we feel will take care of the deep snow.
Okay.
Hey, John, could I ask you a favor just in the future with these and just in general with people? It would be so great on these summaries if you said, included in the current budget at this price point, because we're always going to ask you otherwise, is it in the budget? So if you can just say, you know, allocated in the budget, this amount, which is kind of, we won't ask you that. Because, thanks.
Great. Anybody else? Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase? The approval of a request from New Canaan Parks and Rec Department to enter into a contract with Chadwick Barrows in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars, less a trade in value of forty-five hundred dollars for a total cost of seven, one seventy-five, three ninety for the purchase of a new Bombardier S W fifty Snowplow.
Since I'm from Buffalo, I'm going to move. Yes. Thank you, Amy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
That's all right. Thank you.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, John.
Good.
All right, moving on to softball, baseball field, ball field maintenance with Ryan Restivo. Okay, thank you.
Just very simply, Brian Restivo, he's been the Assistant Superintendent for almost two years. He's taken on baseball, softball, field maintenance, and he's doing a great job.
And Veterans Day.
Yes, exactly. So he, he went out and he'll take it from there, but he's gone out and requested the prices.
Okay.
Yes. So good morning, all. It is a pleasure to be here this morning and I look forward to working with you all. To begin, my name is Ryan Restivo and I'm the Assistant Superintendent, as mentioned, for the Parks Department, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the New Canaan Parks Department today. So today we are requesting the approval to enter into contracts with A F S Athletic Field Services and Dura Edge Products for our fall softball and baseball field renovations. This year, we reached out to four qualified vendors and only Athletic Field Services was able to provide us with a proposal. We would like to, to award the repairs to A F S of Bridgeport, Connecticut. A F S has serviced our fields for many years and managed to keep in line with last year's prices. I assure you, these repairs will and have improved the safety and playability of our ball fields. We have eleven town-owned ball fields currently and eight of those are clay infield baseball and softball fields. So the work provided by Athletic Field Services would be a total of forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And then we selected Dura Edge Products Company and their recreational premium infield mix. This mix has benefited our, benefited our maintenance program and is the most important aspect of New Canaan's renowned clay fields. The total cost of shipping and materials provided by Dura Edge would be twenty-four thousand and eighty-six dollars. The two amounts mentioned include a ten percent contingency and are available and budgeted within the Park's capital infrastructure budget.
Thank you. Any questions?
Right, Amy, with these where we are contracting for services as opposed to buying something that we have to have a contingency. I mean, are, so like the, the, the field services, I guess that's the actual work, right? That, that, the people hours, right? And then the Dura Ed product, I mean, we already priced it. I'm just wondering why? I understand why some things need contingency. I'm just not, I don't understand why this needs a contingency.
So for our contingency, the reason why I put the ten percent contingency is just to prepare for the uncertainty. So the worst case scenario, you know, God forbid, something happens that we need repaired for safety reasons, then we'll, I don't plan to use this contingency for this project at all, but it's just a safety concern and just want to be prepared for the worst.
And, and as far as the clay is concerned, we buy that per ton. So they don't, the truck doesn't get loaded exactly to twenty tons or anything like that, so it could be twenty-one. So that's where the contingency, we barely use any of the contingency. Like with Athletic Field Services, if we, if we get out there and see a little bit more sod that's worn and make the decision, it might be a few hundred dollars.
Right.
So that's why it's also ten percent instead of the normal fifteen.
Right. Okay, I just think, you know, we, we, I, I understand why we build in contingencies because you don't quite know, but it's, if we get a mechanism in place that we eventually like true up like every quarter and say, oh, these projects, we only use this much contingency. I mean, I get it, you need it because otherwise you can't, you have to stop a project, but it'd be really great to know how much that we actually end up using.
That's easy.
Good.
Yep. And, and Ryan, in the past, and this just comes from having raked those fields before, are you still letting coaches involved in any kind of maintenance? Or they're, they're restricted and they're out, right? They're, they can't touch anything anymore?
Absolutely not. It's, it's the Parks Department's responsibility to maintain those fields, and it's, it's worked well that way, so we emphasize no coaches, no players. There's, there's been some issues in the past, but we've addressed them and we'll continue to address them as they come, so.
Good. So that message is clear. No, don't, don't go out there and do your own bulldozing.
Right.
Is that because it's messed it up in the past?
Yeah, well, I mean, listen, these guys, the, in twenty years, twenty years ago, these fields were dangerous. I mean, they're, you know, there were holes all over the place and, you know.
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, okay, sorry. And so, so there was a locker there where the coaches would actually have a key and you'd go in and you'd actually rake the fields and there were shovels there and you'd fill everything in before the games. And it was, a lot has changed. I mean, there was no clay. It was all, it was New Canaan dirt. So this is great, much safer for the kids too, so thank you.
So again, so you mentioned that with Athletic Field Service, there were no qualified bidders. You didn't, you went out to four and nobody came back with a, a response. Is Dura Edge part of Athletic Field Service, a separate company?
Dura Edge is a separate company.
So again, then I have to ask, you know, with the bids, how many did you go out to?
We reached out to four and on those proposals, we, we asked for references as well.
For athletic feat, for the, the field work itself, for the clay itself, no. Many years ago, we did go out to bid for clay, but once you go down one route, you know, Dura Edge makes a certain type of clay. So we need the same clay. We don't want to mix them. We can have a lot of.
Okay, I'd like to understand that, that no mixing of clay, because, you know, obviously, you know, a priority of mine is to make sure that we are, you know, competitively bidding all contracts, especially at this price point. So if we can discuss sort of which ones we can't because of, you know, mixing and things like that. I'd just like to get a better understanding that we can do that offline some, at some point. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department to enter into contracts with the following vendors? Athletic Field Services, forty-one thousand, four thirty-five, plus a ten percent contingency of four thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars for a total contract of forty-five thousand, five seventy-nine, and Dura Edge Products for twenty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars, plus a ten percent contingency of two thousand, one hundred ninety dollars, giving a total contract value of twenty-four thousand, eighty-six dollars. The project entails field maintenance work and the softball and baseball fields.
So moved.
Second, you, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Just as a note, when we issue a, when we have requests to purchase order for this, we don't put the contingency in the purchase order. So the contractor themselves, they, they can be watching the meeting today, but they don't know that it's there, so to speak. So we don't publicize it.
Great.
Thanks.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next is Joe Zagorensky with the Police Facility Renovations Material Testing.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, so I'm here today to seek approval for material testing services for the police department project. As part of the police facility renovations, a statement of special inspections is prepared by the project's structural engineer. On this project specifically includes the soils and foundations, which is basically the footings and the bearing surfaces, cast and placed concrete, which is they look at the concrete reinforcement, rebar, mesh, spacing, anchor bolts, concrete mixed designs, and then the placing and curing of the concrete. Pre-cast concrete, they'll go to the plant, look, review the operations and the quality control procedures, review all the shop drawings and, and finally the pre-cast elements, they, they oversee the installation. And then for masonry, they'll review the materials certifications, mortar mixes, anchors and ties, and just make sure everything's installed again properly. And lastly, the structural steel material certifications, fabrications, and then they'll look at the, all the welding and the details and just make sure that everything is installed properly on the project. And they're a third-party service and they work directly for the town in New Canaan. They protect our interests. So we bid these inspection services and received five bids. The bids are in the form of a matrix, which is attached to the, the request and their associated unit prices. So there's a, there's a matrix that just basically there's a memo and a matrix that shows kind of a bunch of unit prices. So basically, we buy a bunch of unit prices and we call them out as, as their, as their services are required. So special testing presented the lowest overall cost of services. So the Department of Public Works and the Police Department Building Committee are requesting authorization to enter into a contract with special testing labs in the amount of forty-four thousand, plus a contingency of six thousand, six hundred, for a total of fifty thousand, six hundred to perform the material testing in accordance with the statement of special inspections. And the contract will, will simply be our, our standard purchase order, the statement with the statement of special inspections attached, and it'll be a, a not to exceed forty-four thousand without written authorization. It did include six thousand, six hundred because it's really in contingency because it, it really depends on how often we call them out and how efficiently we go through the project. So it's our, our goal to spend less than forty-four thousand, but obviously, time is, is of the essence when, when we have them. So we don't want to have to come back for additional approvals for the six thousand, six hundred.
So we can, or we could separate this out in the, in the motion then? Because I, I, we don't have to separate it out. So it's a forty-four thousand dollar request with a six thousand dollar contingency.
Correct, six thousand, six hundred. Uh, yes.
Okay.
So the funds are available. It's part of the police department's soft costs. The, the budgeted amount is what we are, are requesting for approval, so the forty-four thousand.
Hey, Joe, can you remind me when I said Police Building Committee? In terms of the bids, was that part of Turner's bidding this out or is this us bidding this part of it?
So it's a slam.
Because it's all costs.
Slam.
Slam did it.
Slam did it. Slam bid it out for us, yes. And it's professional services, so we don't always bid, bid these out, but we don't buy them that often. So we did, in fact, bid it out. We figured it was, it was worth, worth seeing what the market was, is bearing.
Great. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to approve a request from the department? Sorry, approval request from the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with special? Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Let me wait just a second. Police Department, yeah, sorry. Approval of request from the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with special testing labs in the amount of forty-four thousand in order to perform material testing as part of this police department renovation project and a sixty-six hundred dollar contingency with a sixty-six hundred dollar contingency. So we're really asking for a fifty thousand dollar approval.
Fifty thousand, six.
Sorry, fifty thousand. See, it's not in the motion. I need it in the motion. Okay, so.
Yeah, that's just, that's really a housekeeping thing because that really should be in there.
Yeah, and it's in the, in the motion. So we'll, from now on, we just need to have the whole, the whole language in there for the, which is why I was going back and forth between two different motions, because there's fifty, another fifty thousand dollar item right below it. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve? Since you're on the police.
There you go. There you go.
Until now, I'll take that, Amy.
Please firm a second.
Second, Steve, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, motion. Thanks, Joe. All right, Tiger.
Good morning. Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Do you normally come to these meetings? I haven't seen you before.
Uh, it's, so bear with me, it's my first time, so I appreciate it, yeah. So this first item is flagging services. So flagging services are required for many of our town projects, road paving, especially when police officers aren't available. Precise Traffic Control has done some very good work for us, providing great customer service for our flagging needs and is able to provide our certified flaggers at a moment's notice. When we call, we're able to get a flagger the next day. That's very important for scheduling. Us, because we need them for various town projects, road paving, sidewalk reconstruction, tree trimming and removal, things of that nature. Precise currently charges thirty-five dollars an hour and fifty-two fifty for overtime. That's for a non-pervailing wage job or fifty-five dollars an hour and eighty-two fifty an hour for prevailing wage for overtime, compared to the police, which charge seventy for town projects or a hundred and five. Last year, we spent sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents on flagging services in fiscal year twenty-three. To date, we've spent twenty-one thousand, eight twenty-five, twenty-five. Right now, we're at the end of, we had, we had asked for a twenty-five thousand dollar blanket purchase order from the previous board. We're at the end of that limit now, so the next bill's coming in that we have will, will, will top over that. So we're asking for an extension of that contract for fifty thousand dollars to get us through this last bit of, of road paving and, and things of that nature. This isn't a bid project as far as a bidded item. What we've had in the past is we originally using Allstate Traffic Control. The person that ran that when I retired, there was a spinoff and all the men went to area-wide protective A W P. A W P, you have to call in advance and they will tell you the day of, the night before, the day of, whether or not you actually have a flagger. That's completely unacceptable as far as we're concerned, as far as scheduling purposes, because I can't find out at nine o'clock at night that the next day I don't have a flagger. So at that point in time, we pushed A W P aside. The crew that was working for Allstate formulated their own company, which is Precise Traffic. The majority of the flaggers come out of Waterbury. You know, I call the day before, text the day before, they come down, they've done very nice service for us. If we don't like a flagger, we ask them to not come back. We ask them, you know, that's very rare. In that case, but the majority of them are out and doing their work. And as far as their price points, they're very comparable to anyone else out there. There's not many other flagging services in our area besides A W P. A W P, you know, controls a lot of it down here, but given their scheduling and the fact that they can't provide you or tell you that you're going to have one is one of the things that is unacceptable to us. And in this regard, they fill in for when we can't get a cop. So the cop is the first choice. We can't get a cop, we go to flagger. And we determine whether or not per project or per road, whether or not we actually need a flagger or what the job might entail. If we're in the shoulder, if we're working on the sidewalk, if we're on a cul-de-sac, things of that nature that get lower essence, where we might not necessarily have a flagger, we move out into more busier roads and different operations, then we either require a flagger or go to police. So whenever we're paving, I want a cop there. Whenever I've got a concrete truck in the road, I want a cop there. If I can't get that, then I'll go to a flagger. I might add an additional flagger in at the cost of a flagger. I can get two flaggers for the cost of one officer.
What, why, why do you choose sometimes to have a policeman at a much higher price point versus a flagger? I think you mentioned it's a nature of, because it is, it's double, right?
Police act, I don't choose, the police actually have right of first refusal, to be honest. So it's more a question of that we've had an agreement with the police department to work through this and for certain operations, specifically when I've got a vehicles in the road and it's moving through the road or, or situations whereby when we're milling, you can move around the milling and you can drive on the millings and it's not necessarily an issue. When I'm paving, I can't have cars driving on the, on the mat. We've had cars drive up directly behind the paver as we're, as we're, as we're working, right? Can't have that because then they ruin the mat from behind. So in certain instances, and then it depends upon type of road, very busy. Sometimes I've got residents who are what's considered in our red book. So if they're on life support, they've got, you know, they're on our, they're on dialysis, things of that nature. I like to have an officer there because they're tied in directly with the radio system. So God forbid there is a call, the officer gets the call on the, on the job and then can respond at that point in time, either respond or get everyone off the road so the ambulance can come through without delay, instead of having the ambulance pull up with sirens and then we have to move by the way the officer already understands it. So there's certain parameters based upon every job in every situation whereby whether or not we choose the, the officer flagger or, you know, whether we, whether we need a flagger or not.
And if for an officer, this would be overtime? I mean, this would be outside of their regular.
This is extra duty.
Extra duty, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's considered extra duty and the rate is, is set by the police commission. We've had a seventy dollar rate for quite some time. They actually get a higher rate for you, working with the utility companies. You know, there's a different rate. There's a, there's a town, I won't call it a rebate, but there's a reduction in cost for the town services.
And is the request for fifty thousand, is that in addition to the twenty-five that's already been approved?
Correct, yeah.
So you're expecting, last year was sixty thousand, this year is seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, I don't expect that I'm going to get that far, but then it'll roll us into next year. And I'll just, I'll, I'll carry the P O out to the end.
And this just gets charged against your paving, your, your two and a half, whatever, two, two point three million dollar paving?
It gets charged to which, yeah, so if it's road, if it's road paving, like right now we're road paving, so it would be against the road paving. If it was sidewalk, then it would be against the sidewalk management account. If it was tree trimming, it would go against a tree trimming account.
And Tiger, you said you capped, that you had it capped at twenty as you went through this? Is that like a, just a stop point to check back in or why was it?
Yeah, that was it. We don't like to come in with a huge blanket, you know, you know, so we try to, we call it phasing. So we come back in so we can actually have a discussion and sit, that was mainly the, mainly the reason, you know, to just kind of say, okay, interim basis, we'll come in, you know, it was sixty thousand last year, we'll come in at twenty-five, we'll talk again, then we'll go forward.
That's a good check for you too, to make sure you're on track too, which is.
It's, it varies. To be honest with you, every, every job varies and every year varies because it depends upon where we are. Like this year, we were on Richmond Hill, right? And because of the hill, I was requiring either two or three flaggers on a day because of where we were and the job was spread out and the top of the hill, you can't necessarily see coming down. And then we had a situation whereby the job sites on one side of the tracks, we were having to stop people on the other side of the tracks because we didn't want to stop them as they came across the track. So I had to have a flagger down lower, right, below the gates, even though we were working above the gates, if you follow me, right? And then we would open it and then the, then the entire pattern was the entire job site at that point in time. So situations like that, whereas say, when we were working on Owen Oak Ridge, they were completely off the road or in the shoulder. The majority of the time we didn't need a flagger there except we had a concrete truck there when he's directly in the road at that point in time with the chute. Other than that, everything was off the shoulder where necessarily, you know, traffic could flow around without any problems.
How does, how does long-term, like when you take a bridge out, how does that work? Is it that you rely back to signage again?
Signage, yeah, so at the, for first couple of days, we put cops out there, but for say Ponus Ridge, we actually just closed the road and, and rely on signage at that point in time and then tweak the signage based upon residential concerns and complaints. Like on Ponus Ridge, if we, certain deliveries won't go past a road closed sign. So if it says road closed, they won't, they're not allowed to go past it, even though the road is closed at the bridge, not at the sign, they can't go past it, so we have to amend the signage to say road closed to hedge, bridge closed, things that I need you to allow the delivery trucks to actually make it in. So your, your Uber, your, your DoorDash, things like that. So it gets a little more interesting then.
I mean, we take for granted these flaggers, but they're literally the, the interaction, the town show between the, the, the project and the resident. And that's, you know, it's, it's not, it shouldn't be taken lightly because the, either those guys are going to, or gals are going to be doing a good job or not. And I've seen some of them on cell phones and, you know, some of them are great and they're friendly. They, they actually give directions and I've seen them, I've seen variations of different personalities out there. But, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you weed out the bad ones, but.
We talked to, well, we go out every day, take a look, and then we talk to the contractors and then listen to complaints elsewhere. If we do get a complaint, we, we investigate each one. But, yeah, to your point, that's one of the reasons why when you find us, we have a successful company, we want to stick with that successful company because of that reason, because there are instances of where, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to return with either that individual or that company.
Yes.
We've had situations like that, unfortunately, and it's the, it's the nature of the beast in construction, so. But right now, they've been very, very good for us for the past several years. And like I said, I text her in the afternoon and say, I need a flagger, I need two flaggers on this. And I get back, yes, thank you. And they're there the next day. That's imperative as far as, you know, as far as scheduling goes.
Good.
So Tiger, is the right of first refusal part of the police union contract?
Sure.
It's part of our charter.
It's part of the charter.
It's part of the town's charter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
It's been a topic of discussion for. It's been a topic of discussion for.
Yeah, because I just, the question, I guess it'd be interesting to do an analysis of um, you know, sort of how much extra we've like identified those projects that you didn't really need police, that you could have used a flagger. Um, because it wasn't a high, you know, risk situation and, you know, sort of how much more have we had to pay as a town using the um, police services versus the um, you know, outside services?
That's one of the reasons why we had the discussion before of, of trying to utilize them only when absolutely necessary to try to save money, as you said, you know, in case of saying, okay, it might be in the charter, but you know, in this instance, I'd like to use a flagger, you can, you, you deploy your police officers elsewhere to other projects that are going on. Um, non-town related and then uh, and then reduce the overall cost of the project, but you're correct in that, you know. It's, it's worthy of another discussion, um, you know, future discussion for the exact same reasons.
Okay, alright, great.
I would imagine logic gives you some of that, so in terms of an intense project, if you're in a back road somewhere where you have like one car every fifteen minutes as opposed to downtown where you've got, you know, a line of traffic going through, I'm sure some of that plays into it, but.
It does, yeah, it does, um, spit wood to, for an example, when we did the uh, smoke testing, so the smoke testing company came forward and said, this is the, these are the roads that we're gonna be working on. We gave that list to the police department and they said, these are roads that, you know, we definitely need a cop, these are, you can use a flagger and these are ones where maybe we don't need anything at that point in time, depending upon where it is, unless you, you know, if you get, you know, you're on Weed Street, you know, or Main Street, then you're on, say, a lesser road for a flagger, and then you're on a cul-de-sac kind of deal, same exact thing. So we, we sent the list to uh, Lieutenant Farrar, he went through the list and said, these are the ones where, you know, I'd like to have an officer. These are the ones you can use a flagger in, you know, those little uh, discussion back and forth, but that was one way also to try to minimize the amount of cost for flagging, yeah, for lease protection on those certain roads for that project itself.
Hey Tiger, are the um, police interested in picking up all these different hours or does it kind of depend?
Okay, absolutely.
Alright, there you go, thank you. Because it's extra duty, it's not.
It's extra duty, right. They have a, the, I think it was the past chief uh, implemented where they have to serve their their regular shift first before they can go to extra duty, whereas in the past, they could do extra duty and then their shift, but that would mean a sixteen hour day and their shift was the latter part of the, of that sixteen hours. The former chief said, no, if you're gonna do extra duty, it's at the end of your shift, not at the beginning of your shift, your overall shift. For that reason, so that they were sharp and, and um, you know, well rested for their shift, you know. For the primary reason why they're here.
How do we get to the seventy dollar rate versus?
That's set by the police commission.
Okay, so do we have any, I mean, given sort of differential?
They did go to uh, they went to, I believe, a hundred and five for utilities, um, and but they kept ours at seventy. It's either eighty five or a hundred and five, I'm not quite certain, have to look back. I was told they were being charged a hundred eighty five? Alright, eighty five for utilities, um, I heard someone was getting a hundred and five, but the uh, eighty five for utilities and seventy for us, so when they went that change, they, they kept it for seventy for the town. We didn't move off of that.
And correct me, I think you, you mentioned to me that for police, it's a minimum four hours, right?
If, yes, if uh, if we're not able to catch the officer before he leaves in the morning, so uh, it's a minimum four hour shift. If the flagger comes down and we don't need him because it's raining, the flagger goes home.
Yep.
He doesn't get paid.
And, and so if the flagging job is a three hour job, but he still gets four, he gets four, yeah, so that's, it's a it's not, it's not just the price differential, it's the time differential, yep.
Right, there's, yeah, there's two factors in there. One is the fact that if, if, if it's raining and we cancel the job at six thirty and the officer's en route, he gets four hours.
Yep.
Um, if he's there and we stop at three hours, he gets four hours. Once he, once he approaches four, then he, um, then it's just the hours that he works at that point in time.
And how often do we know, like before you're gonna call them, you know, how many hours they're gonna need? So the reason I'm asking is.
Day, typically an eight, you know.
Oh, usually I'm all.
Typically have them for the.
It's usually, okay.
Okay, there's very few instances where we'd only need them for a short period of time. So it's also, at that point in time, it's almost unfair to the officer, right, that you're saying, okay, I only need you for three hours, I only need you for four hours. And then it makes them have to determine whether or not which job they choose. Right, if they got a job that's gonna give them eight, job's gonna give them four, they'll choose the job that gives them eight versus the job that gives them four. If you follow me on that, so I'd rather take that guesswork out of it, because I'd rather have it be, I need you here and, you know, and we're gonna work a full day and utilize you for the full day.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve or request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Precise Traffic Control and the amount of fifty thousand dollars to provide flagging services for town projects when necessary?
So moved.
Thank you, second, please. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. So this next one is a little interesting, um. So we figured, um, what we did is we did a uh, an interim look at our fees. Due to a change in our, in the permitting process, we instituted online permitting, Jen Ielson was uh, instrumental in that. And then some other developments that we had relevant to other departments in our, like specifically our transfer station, we took a look at all of our fees. Um, normally we do it for fiscal, so we'll do it again for fiscal twenty five and say what, what will happen, say instituted in July one. But given the fact that we just came online for online permitting and we've had a couple of um, instances at the transfer station of miscommunication or, or um, misunderstandings that we felt it was um, good for us to take a look at everything. So the first one was our street opening permits. Previously, the fee was twenty cents a square foot, which was very, very low. And in March at ten, we did a holistic look and changed it to seven dollars and fifty cents a square foot. There was also a fifteen percent administration fee attached to that. And then a PCI fee, a pavement condition index fee. So if the road was paved within the first two years, we hit the, we hit the developer with a fifty percent surcharge, and if it was, had been paved within three to five years, we hit him with a twenty five percent surcharge to try to have them not hit the window of immediately after paving a road, come in and, and cutting it. Because we had that situation on Harrison whereby we paved it and then a developer came in and because it was brand new, decided to start buying houses and then cut the road again. So we put those sort of penalty fees in. Um, what we're proposing is to go to a straight ten dollar per square foot fee, remove the administration fee and remove the uh, the surcharges for the additional uh, for the PCI change. In essence, what it does is it basically, if you looked at the administration fee and then the, the fees associated with the the twenty five and fifty percent, we're either just below ten dollars or just above ten dollars, so the average was around ten dollars a square foot. And given the fact that we're asking the, the resident or the builder to go online, it's a difficult calculation to create, right, to say, okay, this is your square footage, multiply by seven point five, multiply by one point one five, and oh, look at this list and tell you that, oh, now you're two years out, you gotta add fifty percent surcharge. So we decided, let's just make it easier on the, on the developer or the, the applicant and say, it's ten dollars across the board, your square footage times ten, that's your fee. And then uh, it gets submitted, Christie reviews it, makes sure that it's uh, correct, you know, in its uh, in its dimensions and what they're actually asking for. And then they pay the fee online and, and um, we get our money, they get their permit. So that's the first change was to just try to make it easier because of the online permitting system and just to make it easier across the board. And make that change to ten dollars, um, effective immediately since online permitting just came into effect. Um, and then the second was, um, we have a disparity between our disposal of brush and our construction debris whereby disposal of brush, um, the fee was a hundred dollars per ton. Uh, we haven't had an increase in that for eighteen years, that was set in July of twenty, two thousand and five. And then our construction debris is at a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, that's a reduction from a hundred and twenty five, and the only reason for that is because the, when the, um, when we were calculating it out, we're back to, at this time, we were giving out cash back, right, so it was cash in, cash back. And it came down to nickels at that point in time, so we were like, why don't we just make it easier, the mathematics easier? Um, and keep it at a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, instead of when you multiply something by five, you always get a five at the end, you know, so we had nickels everywhere, so. We don't use cash anymore, it's just check in credit card, but at the time, that was the reason for that change. Our thought is to go strictly to a hundred and twenty dollars a ton across the board. Um, one of the reasons for that is if someone comes in with a combined load, brush and debris, right? Then they have to go dump one, come back, dump the other. Um, and then we get into a little bit of miscommunication whereby we can't see into the truck, we think it's brushed, it's construction debris, he goes down, he dumps it, we find out that we charged him construction debris. It's a recharge and brush, which was less, we gotta go down there and tell them, I'm sorry, you're wrong, we gotta come back up to the scale. It's not necessarily, um, for the amount of effort and the amount of difference in dollars, it's not worth the uh, worth the um, the aggravation, so to speak. And then the other is that we have uh, we were giving three hundred pounds per free across the scale. Uh, up to three hundred pounds, meaning that if you came across the scale first time at three hundred and ten pounds, you got charged for three hundred and ten pounds. Mainly because that ten pound difference, we were charging people for a ten pound difference, and they were complaining they were getting charged like fifty cents, so we charged them the entire amount. But someone before them came in at two hundred and ninety five pounds, we'd get the entire allotment for free, if you follow me, right? So again, exact same thing, we have where some such, some situation where the guy in front of him, two ninety five, he's free, the next guy's three oh five, he's gotta pay for three oh five. Right, so we said, well, let's just get rid of that as well and just say anyone across the scales, your first three hundred pounds are free, you get one trip across the scales unless you have a situation whereby your car is tiny. You know, we have people come in in a Prius, they can't necessarily carry everything in a Prius in one shot. Um, things of that nature, but we just say, okay, your first three hundred pounds are free, everything after that you have to pay for. And then that gets rid of any miscommunication or, or um, misunderstandings. And then that, that um, allows everyone, you know, to, to work through the transfer station uh, in a, in a nice manner. You know, we've had situations whereby we've just had, you know, like I said, we've had complaints one way or another, we've had disagreements. And it's not necessarily a place where we want to have disagreements, especially for the dollars that we're talking about, you know. We're talking about, you know, fifty cents, a dollar, two dollars, I don't want my men arguing over two dollars. They're doing their job, but I don't want them arguing over two dollars. So the thought is to then just say, okay, the first three hundred pounds per day um, is free regardless of your load weight. And then once you're, you know, once you top over that, you come back across the scales, your load weight's over, you gotta pay.
Hey Tiger, from, they dump the brush or the construction debris, debris to you, and then we move it elsewhere? Is it cheaper because the brush is organic? Does, is that, you know, we get rid of it?
We bid on this, yeah, the, we bid those out on two year contracts, we're actually going back out to bid right now, we'll know those numbers coming in. But yes, there's a difference between what we pay going out um, for construction debris versus brush versus trash.
I, I gotta think construction debris is more expensive going out than brush, right?
That's correct. Yeah, because they, you know, there, there could be an end product for the brush, there's not necessarily an end product for the construction debris.
It's not like we get a great arbitration, this at all.
No, and, and we're, and at these rates, we're actually, while we're not making money, we're not losing money at the rate, if you will. So what we're, what we're charging is a little more than what we're actually paying for it to go out. You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make too much money on it, but we, but you know, at the same time, there is a, you know, there's just overhead for just for the men to be there, there's a little bit of overhead there, so we try to stay a little bit ahead of um, of what we're charging, what we're being charged going out, we try to stay a little bit above that rate. So that's kind of uh, the three interim changes that we would, or four interim changes we would like to make. In essence, uh, effective upon posting in the paper. We'd like to do that, that one is, one, it'll clean up the uh, the online permitting and make it easier, and then this other will just hopefully get rid of uh, situations that were um, you know, we're having arguments over, over doc, over, you know, a dollar or two, which is not worth it.
Yeah, and, and these changes won't make any material difference to the revenue number you expect coming from this.
No, that was, that's, thank you, that was the last, last part, it was that we don't, we don't see, that's why on the backs on the additional revenues is NC, we look at no change for those.
Other than the uh, ad in the paper, how are we communicating this to residents?
We'll post it, there'll be signs at the uh, at the station.
You gotta use your electronic signboard or something, or how?
We'll do that, yeah, we have a couple of things we need to use those for right now, but yeah, that'll go into fact with it so that everyone will know. You know, that there's a, there's a slight uptick, basically in the brush, it's a slight uptick in the brush. Um, but for the most part, a lot of the people that come in are coming in at the under three hundred pound limit, they won't even notice that there's a, that there's a change for them.
Tiger, can we utilize the um, the website too, just to, for a temporary?
Yeah, we can put it up, I can, I have a DPW update section, I can put it there. You know, you know, we can do, we can do whatever you'd like at that point.
I think that'd be helpful, I think, too, just so people are aware of what's going on.
Yeah, over communicating is a good thing.
Yeah, cool.
And you're supposed to raise all fees, the former board is like, we're supposed to raise all fees, we were not supposed to be doing that first meeting, by the way.
No, no, I don't want, you know, that, that was why I was just, these were more of a cleanup nature and to be honest, it's more of an ease of, ease of use, right, for online permitting specifically, it's an ease of use.
I get it.
Transfer stations have bargained for.
That is, oh, do a great job of it too.
Hey, any other questions? Alright, so do I have a motion to approve um, a request from the Department of Public Works for proposed interim year changes to DPW fee memos? So moved, second, thank you, Steve, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to do it? And then I'll, that way it'd be easier, is that alright? I'll go out of sequence a little.
Okay, you're gonna have to get our tree warden to come once in a while, though.
Yeah, so.
I heard that in the prior selectmen.
Kevin said that before, he'd like to see.
I did hear that.
The uh, the interesting thing was that he, he, the next day, he, he came to the staff meeting, so he did come to the staff meeting, he said, hey Bob, you know, yeah, Kevin hasn't seen you, so the uh, but thank you, he um, he's on a part-time basis, it's a um, in essence, two hours a day, approximately. Um, and I'd rather see him in the field than here, but he can certainly come here so you can meet him. Um, you know, I want him to do that, I think it's important, and then you can ask him any questions that he might have on philosophy. Uh, it is an appointed position, appointed by the board, um, and he runs until, that's by state statute, and he runs until someone else is appointed, so it's not like you have to appoint him every year annually. But, you know, I ta- I talked to him last time, I said, Bob, you know, it might be nice to show your face. And then ju- as luck would have it, the next day we had a staff meeting, so he was able to be there. But as far as it goes, so um, as part of our tree management program, um, we went out for bid, uh, for our November sixteenth bid, it's our eleventh bid of the season. Um, we go out to six contractors who are allowed to bid um, on our projects, and the reason that they're allowed to bid is because they were on our emergency call out list. If you're not on our emergency call out list and willing to take a slice of the pain for getting called at two AM, you're not allowed to bid our projects. Um, that also with the fact that you have to have a licensed R burst on staff, you've got to have some others of, other um, requirements to be able to be on our bidders list, but the main one is the fact that if you're, if you're willing to come when we need you, then we'll let you bid on our projects. So we received three bids back. Um, Almstead was the low bid at twenty one thousand four thirteen, uh, they range from twenty one four thirteen to thirty two five twenty two. Um, is for ten separate locations in town. Most of your removals of ash trees and some sugar maples. But uh, we do have a couple of removals of some, um, some dead ash trees, um, in Mead Park, as long, as well as the removal of one river birch that's on the edge of the Mead Park pond that is actually growing up between two gold star walk trees. So it's starting to affect one of the trees, so we want to uh, we want to have that removed. Um, Almstead's done very nice work for us in the past. Um, and uh, the funds are currently available in the fiscal twenty four tree service operating budget, so we'd like to, we recommend the contract be awarded to Almstead for twenty one thousand four thirteen.
Questions? Uh, Tiger, how many, this is, which, which number bid is this for a tree work for this?
This is eleven, so.
For fiscal year or calendar?
Fiscal year, uh, for, I'm sorry, for calendar.
Yeah, okay.
The um, so, the uh, what I did was, I'll give you guys this paper, but spent a couple hours looking through our tree bits, so you can uh, I did an analysis for the past five years, because it came up with the P O C D two as well, as far as how many trees we take down.
Right, exactly.
And how many bids we had, so we'll schedule this, so how many bids, we average about, um, eleven bids a year. Uh, we average about a hundred and ninety eight trees to take down. We average ninety five stumps and prune about forty six trees minimum. So that's our averages, last year for twenty three. This year, well, I say through twenty three, we've taken down a hundred and sixty eight trees, we've removed thirty six stumps and we've pruned sixty two trees. That's through the eleven bids. Um, that doesn't include, that doesn't include emergency removal. Thank you for that question, so the um, not that many.
Yeah.
Um, most of the, most of the trees that we plant are um, in conjunction with either the Beautification League, Garden Club, Planet New Canaan. We did some um, a large uh, uh, bunch of planting in Waveney last year. Excuse me, the park.
South Ave too, right?
Uh, we haven't done that yet, so there's the um, the ARPA funds, there was two hundred thousand dollars set aside for ARPA funds. Hundred thousand dollars in the parks, hundred thousand dollars in the roads. Um, we have a, working with the Beautification League, we have the South Avenue Relief Project, which is basically from Cherry Street to um, up past Waveney, where we have a plan to put in trees throughout there. We went to the state, since this is a state road, went for their encroachment permit. And uh, unfortunately, uh, on our second iteration with them, they came back with a number of concerns or things that they want us to, we have to go to every single driveway and do a sightline analysis on every driveway to make sure that the tree that we put in doesn't affect the sightline. Um, that's quite extensive, uh, the trees can only be three inches in caliper and less and can only grow to four inches in caliber and less. Which is, based upon what we have out there, that's not, um, so there's a couple of things that we need to discuss with the state as far as how to move forward with this project, but that hundred thousand from ARPA was slated to be done for this. What was to be slated to be used for this, and then the hundred thousand in the parks. And then the hundred thousand in the parks. We we contracted with Keith Simpson Associates to take a look at Waveney itself. Basically, the large open areas to see where areas that where we could fill in on the canopy. But to your point, you're correct, we don't take, we, there was a comment in the P O C D that says we should replant one tree for every tree that we take down. That's why, one of the reasons why I did the analysis to see exactly how many. And again, it's not emergency tree removal, but emergency tree removal is almost impossible to figure because every tree is different, it might be a limb, it might be a reason why they call out a little bit harder. But the ones that we bid that we take down, then that's an easier quantifiable number. Several years ago, we had twenty thousand dollars in capital in the tree budget. That was, I was about five, ten years ago. Closer to ten, yeah. So and it lasted one year. So we had twenty thousand dollars we put in just for tree planting and that was that we had it for one year and then then.
Some other times, did it get taken out?
One time, one time only, unfortunately. Like I said.
I guess we have the budget, we have the budget, but not in the survey.
Right, we partner with others, you know, so we did a large scale planting at the Mead Park Pickle Bowl Courts, right? So we did that, we did this that wholesale at the at the Elm Street Station, train station there. The conservancy worked with us on the service entrance, they paid for that entirely. Then we did the service area, you know, or I should say the South Avenue entrance, they paid for entirely, the service area was split. So we've had areas where we beautified, planted some trees, some bushes, things of that nature, but we don't have a specific budget set aside for tree replacement. And given the fact that we're trending at about a hundred and ninety eight trees a year, two hundred trees a year, say, that's substantial. Now, you know, the based upon that that spreadsheet I showed you, a lot of them are ashes, you know, we're having problems with ashes. And you were starting to track some other trees that are going to have problems, hemlocks, things of that nature. But we are looking at a big reduction in ashes, we're looking at a possibility of beaches. When Bob comes in, he can tell you everything that, you know, every, you know, known amount of towards a tree and tell you where we're at. But basically tells you, you know, the thought is that this year to put in a number into the budget to say, okay, you know, our our tree budget is five hundred thousand dollars. It's five hundred and thirty nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars from fiscal twenty four, right? To put in ten percent of that towards the capital for tree replacement. Ten percent, just fifty thousand dollars and say, okay, and it might not make the hundred and ninety eight trees, but it's gonna make a dent at that point in time. A lot of the trees are along the roadside, so some of them are in a canopy, you won't necessarily notice. You know, when they're gone, because they're inside that, you know, larger canopy structure, but some are notable, you know. And when they are notable, we do try to replant, but we don't have monies per se. We have a tree maintenance line, it's ninety thousand dollars in the tree budget. That's for tree pruning, that's for helping, you know, that's for say fertilization of trees, things of that nature and for planting. But it's not specifically for planting and it's an operating, meaning that at the end of the year, it it's a, it goes away. So we don't have it where we couldn't do a large scale project like the South Avenue one whereby we would have lost the monies already. Because the the fiscal year were to close and we would have lost the monies that we had set aside for it. So having something on the capital side would would probably be in our best interest.
I I just have a question on that replanting, because you know, we've all been here long enough to remember when we were taking trees down because they were impacting with the utility wires. So I mean, you know, so there's this push and pull of, you know, not having and and you're talking about roadways. And so I just want to understand sort of.
Well, that that comes down to the right tree in the right place, right? So in essence, the, you know, you want to have a underneath the power lines, you want to have a low growing.
So that's that four inch.
That's well, yeah, or just the the type of tree. So it won't, it will max out at a certain height and won't get into the power lines themselves. And on the opposite side, you can have your larger tree, your, you know, your your more stately tree that would grow taller and wider, provide more shade. So it really comes down to the right tree in the right place. Where what we had were trees and they just were, they were beautiful, but they were in the wrong place. Power lines came through, then they pruned them and, you know, or more, pruning is a is a nice word. You know, hacked is probably better, but the so that's really where what was happening. So in essence, anywhere where they're taking down trees of that nature, we're trying to plant below it and not have it come up into the canopy. Ever source, one doesn't want us to and two, why? We plant up into that canopy and then they then we repeat the process.
Will get mad eventually.
Yeah, repeats the process again. So but but that's so when the the relief project looked exactly at that, looked at not only the types of trees that they wanted to give variety across the board, but also its growing structure and then where it should be placed. And if if on one side of the street we got power lines, the other side of the street we don't, then we're looking for the taller trees on the on the opposite side where there's not, where there's no hindrances.
Right, no questions? All right, so did I get a motion to approve a request from the tree warden to enter into a contract with Almstead Tree and Truck Care in the amount of twenty four thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars? Project entails a removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town.
So moved.
Steve, thank you. Second, Sammy, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we need to go back to Tucker and Anne with the school transportation reimbursement.
Correct. Good morning.
Good morning.
You have on your tablets three documents, I believe. One was a memo just stating what the request is for for this morning. And the other is just the backup, if you will. You received a spreadsheet of all of the reimbursements. So I I should back up and say that this is part of, this is required by Connecticut general statutes that we reimburse New Canaan residents who live in town, who go to private school for transportation costs. The process by which that is, that number is decided upon is that we ask the the Board of Ed supplies us with their costs, their per pupil cost. And then we get a roster from the private schools of New Canaan residents that are are taking their private transportation as well as the contract from their bus company. And then we put it all into a formula and come up with basically, it's a number of times, however many students there are. So it's paid out twice a year. You'll see this year there was a significant increase. And when I asked the schools why that was, it was definitely related to the school start time contract. Everything went up about a million dollars. So our portion of that is then there as well. So we are here requesting a an approval of a reimbursement in the amount of two hundred and seventy eight thousand, two hundred dollars to New Canaan Country School. The St. Luke's has not taken us up on this. They are aware that this is open to them. When I inquired, they told me that part of the reason is that they have, most of their students is an older student body. Many of them either drive themselves or driven, they have a smaller number of 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 kids who are taking their, New Canaan students who are using their transportation.
Where is this money? Is it in the school budget?
It's in the town budget.
The town budget is aligned, we, it's.
It is aligned item on budget every year.
Okay, and it's within what we budgeted or not?
It is.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, again, just I, to the extent when we get this stuff, it could be like, it's in the budget, you know, and within this, and then we don't have to ask the question.
So country and St. Luke's, those are the only two eligible.
Yeah, because we provide our contract, our bus contract provides for St. Nice, obviously, we're not doing that this year because there aren't any students in the in the at the school right now.
Has so is is St. Luke's the, well, actually, so country, are they the only school that's taken advantage of this in the past ever? Or is this, what's the trend look like?
As far, as long as Tom Stadler was taking care of this and myself, it's always been just country school.
What's the total amount we have in the budget hand? Do you remember?
Not offhand.
Okay.
I'll get it to you.
Thanks.
I remember these discussions on the Board of Ed.
I'm sure you did.
About how how much this was going to cost changing start time. So the million dollars is very much in line with what we were talking about. Makes sense. Okay, so do if there are no further questions, I'd like to get a motion to approve a request in the amount of two hundred seventy eight thousand, two hundred dollars to be paid by annually for the fiscal year twenty four transportation reimbursement for New Canaan students attending New Canaan Country School as per Connecticut Connecticut general statutes, title ten, section ten dash two eighty one. Do I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, and then we're moving on to overpayments. We need to vote on this. The Board of Selectmen also, Tucker, if I'm not incorrect, the the prior Board of Selectmen reviewed and signed off on these overpayments, but we have to vote tonight today. So could I get a motion to approve the refunds or tax overpayments? So moved. Thank you, Amy. Steve, second, all in favor?
So just just so we could read it into the record, because folks in up can't see this, but this is for, we've got a motor vehicle, supplemental motor vehicle. That's, is that the total there you're talking about?
Yeah, okay, let me get it.
Yeah, so there's thirty, there's thirty one requests under under motor vehicle and another supplemental motor vehicle, total of seventy seven forty four. Just so people know what we're talking about here.
Thank you. Yep.
All right.
Okay.
So as a second, go ahead.
Okay, well, and we had Amy approve, so unanimously, we all approved this. Seventy seven thousand, seven hundred forty four dollars.
And that's pretty, that's normal too. I mean, we see that every year. I mean, at some point.
Why is that? I mean, don't you just get a number and and then you pay the number? I mean, that's how our property taxes come. Exactly. Oh, yes, we had that happen. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and legal bills. Let me get my tablet up again. Okay, so these have all been, I'm gonna get it though, just to do it. Mister, so I need a motion to approve legal bills that have already been signed off on by the prior Board of Selectmen in the amount of so I have the octo, are we doing the full fiscal year amount, Tiger? I mean, Tucker? So there's a legal bill submitted to the selectmen. We don't know what we're approving the doll. Steven wanted to put the dollar figure into the record, so I have it up on my, there's a year to date figure and there's an October figure. The October figure, okay, thank you. So I need to get a motion to approve fifty nine thousand, forty two dollars and fourteen cents for October legal bills. Do I have a motion to approve? These are all already pre-approved by the port prior Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Steve, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but we've got to pay attention to these going forward. So.
Thank you.
It's already done.
Okay, and all the, so I'll make it unanimous, we're approving these legal bills. Thank you. Moving on to contracts. You have on your tablets contracts that are under ten thousand dollars. These don't need to be approved, they're just for your review. Do you have any questions on any of these contracts? If not, we will move on to selectmen comments. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Before we adjourn to executive session. Okay.
Just a quick welcome and thank you. Thank you to the residents for having us. And I know the three of us will do everything we can to watch over the dollars and make sure things run smoothly. So thank you for, thank you for putting us in these seats. And only the last, the last thing I was gonna do is just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and family, friends, all employees and everybody spouses. My wife actually came to the meeting, so thank you, Trace.
Mine didn't.
The spouses are are very important to this whole thing, make it all work.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
And then can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? The purpose of the executive session is discussion of strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section one dash two hundred six B, Town of New Canaan versus State of Connecticut Department of Housing, docket number H H D dash C C V twenty three, six one seven, one eight, six zero S. And that would be with Tucker, Ira, Nick Bomati, Sarah Carey and Dan Redmond. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Steve, Amy second. All approved. And the time, it's ten thirty two. Okay, so we're back in open session and I think I could just get a motion to adjourn at ten thirty two.
So moved.
Amy, second, Steve, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.